I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Yalkin B. Seider.
Again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight, and at that point, I will call the meeting to order. With that being said, I need approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. It brings us over to good news, Dr. Rice. I believe we'll start off with Dr. Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to recognize our first Employee of the Month for the 2025-2026 school year. I am pleased to share that Ms. Robin Harrison has been selected as the Stokes County Schools' Employee of the Month for the month of September 2025. Ms. Harrison has worked for our district since 2021. She exemplifies a tremendous work ethic. She sets a wonderful example for both our students and staff. I would like to share a couple of comments that were shared with us as a part of the nomination. Robin is a quiet, excuse me, Robin is the quiet heartbeat of our school. She is a yes person who always is willing to help teachers, students, and administration. She is kind, thoughtful, warm, and hardworking, but does not seek recognition for any of the work she does. She has built a book club to help struggling readers. She provides data and feedback for the teachers. She works individually with struggling students. She finds a way to actively support every member of our building, all while maintaining a positive attitude. She is an asset to our school. So it is my pleasure to ask Ms. Robin Harrison to come forward and be recognized as the Employee of the Month for September 2025. If you will, we will shake your hand and have a picture made with you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. It is my pleasure to recognize Mr. Eric Mercer this evening. Mr. Mercer has been named the 2025-2026 Stokes County Schools' CTE Teacher of the Year. We are very proud of Mr. Mercer and all his hard work teaching our carpentry and masonry students at South Stokes High School. Here are a few things that his colleagues had to say about him. Multiple folks reached out and sent congratulations to Mr. Mercer. One colleague said that it was well deserved with an exclamation point. Another colleague said, "Congratulations to Eric Mercer for this amazing achievement." And then finally, it was, "Way to go, Eric. I'm glad your hard work and dedication are being recognized." And let me say that I've been a part in my career, I've been a part of several celebrations honoring Teachers of the Years and Principals of the Years and things like that. I have never seen a group of students, and I think Dr. Rice would attest to this, a group of students when we went in and surprised Mr. Mercer that were more genuinely excited and thrilled that their teacher was honored with this award. So that was just fantastic to see and just speaks to the impact that he's having at South Stokes High School. So at this time, I would ask Mr. Mercer to come up and receive this award.
Good evening, Board. Back in early summer, the North Carolina Pupil Transportation Association puts on an event called the Bus Rodeo, where it's an obstacle course for all bus drivers in North Carolina to come to and compete. We historically do not send anyone because we don't have a district that does a qualifier. However, last year, I had a driver reach out to me and say, "Can we do this even though we don't have a qualifier?" I said, "Sure, if you want to go compete in a competition you've never practiced on, you can go." He made the top 10 then, so he came back this past year and made the top five, which is very impressive considering he's only been driving a bus for six years. Most of the bus drivers that enter this are veterans and have been doing it for quite a long time. This includes backing, pulling, parallel parking a 40-foot school bus with inches of leeway both ways. It's a very difficult competition. For him to place in the top 10 twice and in the top five now is very, very impressive. So I would like to recognize Mr. Wesley Mabe for placing in the top five of the NCPTA Bus Rodeo back in June.
Congratulations. Good job.
And if you all want to get up and see my fan for a little bit.
Well, one quick statement, 10th to 5th, your fan clubs won the victory. If you don't come back with a crown, they may not let you come back. Great job. Great job to everybody. Okay, moving on to public comments.
Mr. Chair, we're now at the point of the agenda for public comments. The agenda for each regular monthly meeting will include a time period for citizens to address the Board of Education through public comment. Prior to each meeting, a form will be available for any individual or group to indicate a desire to address the Board of Education and the topic to be addressed. A three-minute time limit will apply to each speaker. Groups are to select one spokesperson to address the Board of Education on the group's behalf, except when deemed necessary by the Board of Education due to an emergency. Information received during public comment will not be acted upon at the time it is received. An official response on behalf of the Board of Education requires the approval of a majority of the Board and will be issued by the Board Chair or his or her designee. Any response by an individual member of the Board of Education shall not be deemed an official response of the Board. Grievances, complaints, or concerns related to individual school personnel or students will not be heard at this forum. Other channels have been established for the consideration and disposition of a grievance, complaint, or concern that involves school personnel or students. The superintendent will discuss with and make available to any individual or group the policies and procedures for this purpose. With that being said, we have two individuals who have indicated a desire to speak. The first is Eric Mercer, and the topic is freedom of speech. Mr. Mercer, you have three minutes, and congratulations again on your award.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this tremendous honor. Being recognized as the CTE Teacher of the Year means the world to me, and I'm deeply grateful to serve our students and this district. Career and technical education transforms lives every day. I watch students discover their potential master real-world skills and prepare for meaningful careers. This work is my passion, and receiving this recognition from you validates not just my efforts, but the vital importance of CTE programs in our schools, and thank you. As we celebrate the success in our district, I also want to address something way on the other. We live in times when voices across our nation are being silenced, particularly when they challenge those who position power. This concerns me deeply because it strikes very hard at what the First Amendment was designed to protect. Our founders wrote, "Congress shall make no law respecting establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievance." The First Amendment wasn't created to protect popular speech. Popular speech doesn't need protecting. It was crafted specifically to safeguard the voices that make them powerful and comfortable. That challenge, I'm sorry, comfortable, that challenged the status quo that forced us to examine difficult truths. As educators, we are called to be the level heads and living examples of these constitutional ideals. We teach our students to think critically, to express themselves with courage and respect, and to engage thoughtfully with ideas that challenge them. How can we expect to embrace these values if we don't model them ourselves? When we allow the forced silence of perspectives simply because they hit a nerve, we betray the very principles we're sworn to uphold and teach. Our students are watching. They're learning, not just from our curriculum, but from how we handle moments that test our commitment to the ideals that we profess. Thank you again for this recognition. I'm honored to continue to serve our students in advancing the mission of career technical education in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Mercer. The subject, Teachers Over Controversial Speech.
I'm not sure. I feel like I have to be here, ma'am. And just to ask that the board keep in mind that the value of a seasoned and dedicated teacher is worth more.
Is your microphone on? Does it have the green light?
No.
We just want to make sure it's recorded for.
And if you'd like to start over, that would be.
I will. I'll say it again, I just feel like I have to be here this evening. And I just ask that the board keep in mind, and anyone else that has any input in that, that the value of a seasoned, dedicated teacher is worth more than any controversial social media post. This is a volatile and scary time that requires calm responses, yes, from our teachers, but also from our administrators and our board members. It is challenging and hard and difficult, but I know that we can rise to this challenge as we work together to be better souls, that we listen to one another and respect one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that ends public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the work session minutes from August 4th of 2025 and the approval of policy 3221 Generative AI.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Superintendent report.
Board, I have a very brief superintendent report, but I think it's timely as I want to talk about the superintendent's advisory council for this coming school year. The first sessions are planned this week, and just as kind of a reminder to let you know the schedule of these, we will have one in September, one in November, one in February, and one in April. And this group is comprised of four different groups. Roughly right now, we have 19 students on the committee, 31 parents, 34 classified staff, and 34 certified staff. The first meeting will be this week when we will talk about the purpose of the committee of being a representative group. So if there are, anybody would like to express something to the committee, they can submit that question in advance of the committee meeting, or they can bring it up during the committee meeting. And we will respond with that and then summarize those results. And last year, I made it a part of my yearly committee, my yearly reports to the board that four of those months would kind of give a summary of those meetings, and I plan to do that again this year. These have been valuable to us. I can't remember if it was last year or two years ago, I was told that we do not need to send Chromebooks home every day. And so, and I listened and considered that, and we quit doing that, and I think it was very much appreciated. We've also gotten some other good ideas from the committee members in the past, and we look to implement those as we can, and if not, we use this as a time of education to let them know why we can't do certain things. You know, sometimes there's things with finances that will say, you know, "Why are you putting air conditioning in a gym instead of giving free breakfast to everyone in the high schools?" You know, those are different funding streams, and that gives us a chance to share that of why there's differences in different things like that, and we're able, they're able to share that with others as well. So it's been a great time to receive feedback and share information, and I look forward to those first committee meetings starting later this week.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rice. Any comments from Dr. Rice's area?
Questions?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Are those committee meeting, like, minutes? Are they, like, published? Or I was just thinking it'd be nice to have, like, a pretty detailed summary, like, in a news letter or what sort.
I create that summary, and I send that to the committee, but I've not shared them with the board, but I certainly could. I shared the summaries of those, but yes, I could share the individual minutes of that as well.
Okay, or just, you know what I mean, I think it could be, right? A lot of involved parents or community members just may be interested or need to know, you know, if they had suggestions who to reach out to that serves, or, you know, if that's appropriate, something like that.
Again, we have tried to have representation. Students are only at the secondary level, but the other three groups encompass all schools, and we kind of do it by enrollment.
Right.
So smaller schools might have less representation than bigger schools having more representation. I think there's, I think up to four classified staff at our largest school, and our smaller schools would have one each. And so there's kind of that gradient in there as well. But anybody that would like to know who their representatives are, we've tried to share those at the school level, but if they would like that, I'd be happy to share that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, pending no further comments, discussion of agenda, discussion of administrative
Board members, I'd like to update you on some changes that we need to make to the administrative procedure for policy 4400. Over the summer, the North Carolina State Board of Education, they reworded some words in the policy on high school transcripts, and they changed that to no longer allow students to receive a grade of FF. So in the past, FF has been used for students who were passing a class but had more than the maximum number of absences allowed. The new change in policy does not allow students to fail a class based solely on attendance. So in our school system, a high school student, once they got to 10 absences, they would have to go through a process to gain that credit. That's been removed, and again, the new language is that students cannot fail a class based solely on attendance. So to comply with this change in policy, we've made the changes there in policy, in the administrative procedure to policy 4400. If you look at that, you have to get all the way to Section H to see where that applies. I'm sorry, Section G. Section G was titled Attendance Requirement for Receiving Credit. All of that would need to be removed. Under excessive absences, you can see there, we've worked through a couple of, a little bit of the end of both of those paragraphs where that would need to be removed as well. Section I, the review process, based on exceeding a certain number of absences, that's now gone based on state board policy. And then, of course, Section J, there would be no appeal process now that that requirement's gone. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Bennett?
Not at this time.
Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Ms. Robertson?
No, no questions.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, sir.
My question is to Fred. Fred, do we need to implement this immediately or let it sit for 30 days since it is policy?
It's a change in a state board policy, I think it becomes effective immediately.
And this is an administrative procedure, not a policy.
Okay, well, then, so we don't even need to vote on it, then. Perfect.
So, sorry, one question. What is prompt this mainly? Did you see, you think statewide, there was just a huge increase of this designation?
You know, years ago, the state did away with seat time. What seat time required to gain a credit. You now have a process called Credit by Demonstrated Mastery where a student can say, you know, "I want to go through a process where I can show some proficiency on a test and then do a product," and they can gain a credit without even taking a class in some way, shape, or form. And I do think there was more than likely a high volume of students who were failing classes solely based on attendance. And I think in our school system, I think the rigor is such that in the vast majority of our classrooms, if a student's not there and doesn't have good attendance, they're going to have a hard time passing that class anyway.
Dr. Rice, from what I'm reading, it's updated to policy 4400, which may be an administrative procedure, but it is a school policy, so therefore we would need to vote on that. Correct, Fred?
Yeah, I think I would like to see the board to.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to move this to action for approval.
Motion to move to action for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bennett. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, it will be action, item C.
Again, along with this, though, it looks like there's still appropriate school-level consequences that follow all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion on item B is discussion of testing and accountability update.
Good evening. Thank you, Board, and tonight, we are going to take a look at the Stokes County Accountability Report for the 24-25 school year. You should have copies of this in your packet of the information that we're going to be sharing with you tonight. We appreciate all of the work that our teachers and our students and everybody that helped collect this data for our last school year, and we want to make sure that we are in detail about the things that we have learned from the previous school year. So the State Board of Education met on September 3rd, and the information that is contained here is all public information. At the top of your packet, there is a link for the NCDPI Accountability Dashboard. If you'd like to look a little bit deeper into individual schools, you can take a look at that dashboard there for additional information. So tonight, we're going to start with some celebrations, and some of the celebrations that we want to look at are our schools that met and exceeded growth, so 10 out of 17 met or exceeded growth this year. We have three schools that earned a school performance of B. The Stokes County graduation rate was 86.9%, and we have 418 students that graduated from Stokes County Schools in the 24-25 school year. Our EL Progress, which is our multilingual learners or students that have English as a second language, have increased by 7.2%. Our overall grade three through eight math proficiency data increased by 2.9%. Math III in high school increased a 14.9%, and this, as we can look in the data in a few minutes, is a four-year upper trend. We're very excited about that. Our overall ACT composite increased by 21.3%. Two of our schools that were low performing in the previous school year have since then been removed. They are no longer low performing. And with some of our regional data, how we compare with the Piedmont Triad, we're 17th out of 17 schools in our region, and that puts us at 46 out of 115 school districts in our state. So now, we're going to take a look at some of the individual data by grade band. We're going to look at elementary, middle, and high, and how the data looks in these individual areas. So the first up is our elementary school performance data. And listed here, you can see how the Stokes County Schools, elementary schools headed up the 24-25 school year with our Walnut Cove exceeding growth in the 24-25 school year. We're very proud of them. The next piece takes a look at our school performance over years that span, spanning from the year 2021 through year 2025, and it shows a comparison of all the parts of each of our individual schools, their growth, their status, and their school performance grade. Our 2025 data is on the far right-hand side of your screen. Moving on to the next slide is our middle school data. This is the school performance data for our three middle schools and how they stacked up for the 24-25 school year. And moving on to the next slide actually shows the school performance grades over the course of the 2021 school year through the 2025 school year for our middle schools and their school performance grade, their growth index, and their status. Up next is our high school data. And in our high school data, we have our schools there about their school performance grade, their index, and their status for the 24-25 school year. And following that is our grade span school performance data over the last few years since 2021 through 2025, with our current data on the far right-hand side of your data One of the pieces that helps provide information for our schools and our school performance grade is the graduation rate. And with this previous school year, there were some requirement changes, and I just wanted to make the board aware of some of these changes that happened in the previous school year before we take a look at our cohort graduation rate. So the rules are very strenuous for being able to remove a student from the graduating cohort graduation rate, and they're very specific about removing a student from a denominator and the type of documentation that is required in order to do that. At the end of the 24-25 school year, our cohort graduation rate was audited for two of our schools, South Stokes High School and West Stokes High School. And within that audit, it was revealed that we need an additional piece of documentation that is required in order to move, remove a student from the cohort graduation rate. So for the 25-26 school year, we have created and made a new sign release form that we have already shared out with our high schools, and that will accompany the regular state documentation, especially when a student leaves their high school to go to homeschool. This form has been shared, and additional reminders will be coming forth, and we will be doing some cohort graduation rate training coming up soon. And we will be doing some, um, some cohort graduation rate training coming up soon, um, probably before the end of October, to make sure that all people that are involved in enrollments and exits at each high school understand the rules and the expectations for the documentation that we have to collect. So on your next slide actually shows our graduation rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And you can see how our schools stack up. Down at the bottom shows our county percentage, how we stacked up against the region, which is our Piedmont Triad, and then our connection to the state data. Following on the next slide is the graduation rates and how we trend in Stokes County Schools from the year two thousand and fifteen through the year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. And your twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five is on the far right-hand side. We have the connections to the county at the bottom of your chart, and then how we compare to the state. One of the pieces of graduation rate that's really important is how our subgroups stack up. And that, the next chart that you see here is how our graduation rate is broken down into the subgroups. And in some of the columns, you see asterisks. We just do not have enough students to have data in those categories. That's why they are blank. The others are the categories that we do have students in. So this comparison shows how our graduation rate by these subgroups compares over the years. And our twenty-twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five data is in the next-to-last column, and the final column is the state so that we can do a comparative between us and our state levels. Okay, we're going to take a step back and actually look at some of the individual pieces for comparative, comparison to the state. And we're going to go back to our elementary data. And so you can see by grade level how we stacked up against the state. So you'll have your state data in the first column for third grade. You'll have your county data for third grade in the second column. Same for fourth, state level data, and then county level data, and then fifth grade state data and fifth grade county level data. We only have science scores for fifth grade. On your next slide, does the same type of comparison for our middle school data. You'll see how the state compares with our sixth grade data for reading and math, the county level for reading and math, then the seventh grade state, seventh grade county, and then our eighth grade state and eighth grade county, reading, math, and science. Comparison for high school data is in this next chart here. The areas and components that are involved in the high school comparison are listed in the chart. And you see our state data, and you see our county data for our high schools. And the last piece that we're going to take a look at is the trend data at each level. So we'll take a look at the county trend data for grades three through five and how we stack up for each one of the subject areas, all the way back dating to two thousand and seventeen through our current year. And then your final column is the change from last school year to this school year, which is the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In your next slide, you'll see the county trend data for our grades six through eight, our middle school students dating back to two thousand and seventeen through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and then our change from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then finally, the last trend data will be for our high schools. Each one of the areas that are contained in the, the trends there from two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-five, and then our change for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As we conclude with our data tonight, I want to take a few opportunities to talk about areas of growth and some of the areas that we've already made growth in. So some of the things that we're looking for, for the future, to continue these opportunities for growth, is we're going to take a look at our graduation rates. And in five of the last school years, we have shown upward trends in our graduation rates, so we're very proud of our high schools. Our math curriculum, eh, we are doing an ongoing evaluation of our math one and math three programs to help involve increases in our math data. For professional development, all schools are receiving professional development with additional math-focused PD at our middle and high school levels. We are continuing to work on our secondary pacing guides with updates and revisions. They are currently underway. We have, um, established ELA curriculum, and we are now entering our second year of our district-wide implementation of this. And our ELA pacing guides, they were updated over the summer to help be aligned with our new curriculum pieces. And just for a final context piece, last year's third graders were the same cohort of students that began school as our COVID kindergarteners. And that has been a piece that the state has kind of focused on when we're looking at data, so I just wanted you to be aware. So with these opportunities, we have lots of opportunities and future plans for us here in Stokes County Schools. And I hope that, um, that you see some of the bright places and some of the things that we're very excited about. And so that takes me to, if you have any questions.
Ms. Bennett? Ms. Knight?
Um, you said that last year's what grade was the COVID?
Third graders.
Because I was pretty sure our fourth graders last year went into, okay, you know, right off, kindergarteners going into COVID, because I had one.
The group that was just following, that was the group that started. The third grade group was the one that, um, had, um, they started with the ADA, BDA, and we wore the mask for the first part. And so there was collective data around the third graders as they were pulling through.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
No further questions?
I mean, this will, you know, it's a lot to absorb. I've just kind of glanced at it. Um, I would ask that we look at it again next meeting even, if, if, you know, if that's okay. Uh, there may be further questions. Um, and then I know you presented a little bit like on a, a plan and, and where to go. I mean, could we at least, even if we don't follow it next meeting, which maybe we should, you know, follow up, you know, as far as how the implementation and things are going, or feedback, you know, kind of mid, midway in? I think that would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
I just want a clarification, like on the, uh, excuse me, on the elementary comparison to state or middle school comparison to state, we have a percentage. Is that percentage of, uh, proficiency?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was thinking.
And it's proficiency of students that scored a level three, a level four, or a level five?
Any questions? Mr. Duncan?
Just a few clarifying, if, um, some things that stood out to me and, without going into a, I guess, a lot of detail, but on the middle school, uh, performance, the southeastern, we, you've got a negative ten, I guess, ten percent or ten points. Um, may I just see that as kind of an anomaly from the other two and previous years for that one school? I mean, is there...
That is a net index score, and it is a combination of the EVOs data with the net score. It's how that, that data is populated, and it is all part of the school performance grade. And it's how they changed from what they consider their projection scores to the end-of-the-year scores.
So that's a different number than what was in twenty-three, twenty-four? Was it calculated in a different way?
No, it's calculated exactly the same way.
So, so what's the, one of the big de- decrease, I guess, is my...
From...
Yeah. And the other two are, you know, at or, I mean, they both met, but, I mean, I just say, I see, I mean, that's not the only anomaly in here, but I mean, just those big numbers stand out, not only negative, I mean, there's been some positive I'd ask about too, but, um, and I'm assuming that the schools that didn't meet will, will have a, uh, action plan on, on...
Yes, sir.
I just, that just stands out to me. I'm not, I mean, it'd be nice to, is to the why. You know, what, what is, what's different there? And then also on the, the graduation rates, is that why we, we have South and West? Um, lower is because of what you were saying with that graduating cohort? Is that the driver?
Due to the audit, it did create an incremental decrease. It wasn't a major, major decrease, but it was a small enough amount that, yes, it did affect that overall score.
Got it. And then, I have another page marked here. Sa- same with eighth grade science, and that was a, and you can, I mean, you can certainly tell the, the twenty-one, you know, that, that year that everybody either went home or in masks. You can, and we're kind of making up some ground, but just that eighth grade science of twelve, negative almost thirteen points, I just, that kind of stands out to me.
And one thing too, for the board to recognize too, is we were in a, um, standard setting last year for our science scores, where we had a new test last year too. And typically, um, when you have a new science test or a new EOG, they, they re-norm the assessment, and you do see a dip.
That, okay, that's...
The, the State Board of Education made a big point when they presented this to the State Board to say, do not compare your science scores to previous years.
Okay.
This was a re-norming year, new standards, new test. This is the new baseline that we have going forward. If you look at the middle school comparison to the state, our middle school science was higher than the state average.
Right. Okay. Well, that, that's, that, that's certainly helpful. And then whatever we did in ACT, um, I don't know if that's a new test or, or what, but I mean, twenty-one points, that's, I, I don't know what, what, what was happening, but great work there, I mean.
Um, our testing coordinators put a big focus on making sure that students were prepared this year, so I, I want to pass that on to the schools. The schools did an excellent job in preparation.
Well, it shows.
Just historically on that, used to ACTs and SATs were only taken by people that were thinking about going to college. Several years ago, they made the switch to everyone takes that test. And so you have people that were, didn't care because they weren't going to college.
Right.
And so that was kind of a re-shift in that, but we're trying to focus the importance of that for everybody. And again, the high schools, the testing coordinators, all of that did a good job with helping to prepare people for that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, a lot of, a lot of things we'd be proud of in the district for sure. I mean, and, and you've got a lot of support and documents to, to show that. So I appreciate the work and what's been, what's went into this. So thank you. That's all.
I hate to beat Debbie Downer. Uh, but I mean, there's some concerning trends here. And we're going to put this on the next one because I want some, as Lucy would, as Ricky would say to Lucy, there's some explaining to do. Uh, we've got some elementary schools that dropped, or one of them dropped fourteen points. It went from a King, it's King Elementary, it went from a fifty-nine last year to a forty-four school grade this year. Nobody's asked for anything special from the board. We give, we typically try to do everything we can to give our students every chance to be successful. If we're not being asked and, and we're doing the same thing over and over and over again and expecting a different outcome, we need to change the outcome because if you look at basically the composite of our scores, we're roughly in the top forty percent. This is Stokes County. We're better than the for, top forty percent. And my, you know, ancient history of me going through school, sixty was a failing grade. Now, I know we've changed the what's failing anymore, but it's not acceptable to this board member. I don't know about the others. So if we need to change something, we need to do it now because we need to hold ourselves accountable and everybody else accountable. So what I would like to see at the next meeting is a, a, just a graph of every school and what their five-year trend is, not just a nice, pretty chart that shows this and this matrix and this. If we just take, you know, and I'll use German because they're at the top of the list. Forty-three to forty-five, it went up. Went to fifty-seven. Down slightly to fifty-three, so it's kind of stabilized. But when you go in the fifties and all of a sudden you're forty-four, something changed. You know, and I, I wish my blood pressure would do that when I read these reports, but it's not going down, it's going up. So this is one board member that wants us to hold ourselves accountable. And, you know, let's don't dislocate our shoulders patting ourselves on the back. Let's pick ourselves up and do better than top forty percent in every, well, three of the high schools went backwards. Uh, two of them, you know, north and, or west in early college, they're Bs. There's no reason, everybody shouldn't be a B. We don't give one preferential treatment. We don't give one better students. We give them the student body based on their broad spectrum. Some of these, and I would like to also see with the consolidation of two schools, what that composite actually did. Did we gain by cutting out the tre, the combination classes? I know it's going to be hard because that student body is, is off, but if we can just average it out and see where we're at. Nancy Reynolds seems to have done really, really well, and so did Sandy Ridge, so those two seem to work. But my concern is elementary because that's where they start, and we can't keep using COVID as a crutch. Lead follow, get out of the way. All right, thank you. With that being said, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. King. To the action, approval of personnel and coaching.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Knight, thank you, Mr. Duncan. All those in favor sitting by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Approval of pine, uh, approval of the Pine Hall facility transfer to Stokes County, that is not for, up for anything other than discussion at this point.
Well, they would like it as action, but again, you can...
Oh, I understand what they would like and what, you know, from, so everybody's aware, they came to us with a one-dollar offer.
And so that, that is the proposal that, from the county manager, who sent an email, uh, on September twelfth, said, "I, um, I don't know if you've been keeping up with the discussions among our board members at their recent meetings regarding the Pine Hall facility. They've asked me to see if your board would be willing to transfer the property to Stokes County for one dollar with no conditions attached. Thank you for your consideration." Jeff Sanborn, county manager. So that was their proposal.
Okay. To keep this professional, Ms. Bennett, what say ye?
Come back to you.
Okay. Ms. Knight?
Um, I would potentially have some conditions as far as, and, and it may have been tossed out. I've not been able to follow, um, meetings or discussions, but I think the holdup for me would be, um, if they're going to first involve the community, and, and from what I've seen on social media, maybe they've had a meeting. Uh, if they're going to consider the community's input and work with them, um, to maybe mold like an RFP or find the best buyer, you know, that suits the needs of that area. And if those funds, when it's sold for whatever price, flow back into our capital funds budget, you know, that sits at the county, um, then, you know, I'm okay with that. Uh, but again, I guess that doesn't involve just a dollar, no conditions. My condition would sort of be, hey, you know, can you confirm that this is going back into, um, school capital funds?
Well, I think we can confirm that they want to give us a dollar. Nothing to the four cent fund. A dollar.
Well, I, again, that would be my thing, conditions, further discussion.
Oh, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
So you're laughing on the inside just like we are.
Well, I'm not totally laughing. Again, if they want to sell it for five hundred thousand dollars, if it goes into our capital fund, I'm okay with a minimal amount. But, you know, I want to know that the sale comes back to the schools and, and, you know, that would be my question.
Okay. Is that it? Mr. Robertson?
Uh, somewhat like what Ms. Knight just, uh, laid out. I can't, I cannot support just transferring it over to them for a dollar with no strings. for a dollar with no strings attached. I do, I do see the point where I think the commissioners might would have more leeway trying to dispose the property than we would as a school board. And maybe a question for Mr. Johnson is if, if we're disposing of it and we want to sell it, we pretty much put it up for bids. Is that correct? And, and it's, it's, it's almost like, it's almost like, in my mind, it'd be almost like putting your house on the market for sale. You put it on the market and the offers that you get coming in on the house, you can't discriminate one way or the other is, is, and I guess we're probably, our hands are probably even more tied than a homeowner. A homeowner could decide, you know, to take a lesser offer or whatever. We're, we're going to be pretty much bound to take the highest and best offer. Is that correct? So we're, I think we are a little bit more restrained than they are. They may have more, a little bit more leeway in how they would dispose of the property. Whether it would be some economic development grants that they could offer with the property and to help dispose of it, something along those lines. So they may be in better position to do so. My problem is selling it to them for a dollar without any, any conditions. If, if we sold it to them for a dollar and they end up realizing a profit of X amount of dollars, and then they would put that into their general fund and the schools, the school system gets zero. That would be my problem. I think the condition for me would be if we sold it to them for a dollar, as long as we received any profits that were realized from that sale, the disposal of the property and eventually go into our four cent fund, then I would be okay with that. Because like I said, I think if we dispose of it, I think our hands are pretty much tied as to how we, we are able to do it. They maybe have more leeway. But I would not agree to transfer it to them without the agreement that we, any, any profits that are realized goes into our four cent fund. That would be my stipulation to it. And how we just, how we transferred it to them at this point, whether it's a dollar, a hundred thousand dollars or whatever we come up with, I would, I would support, you know, the number that the board determined to be fair. But from listening to the commissioners, especially one commissioner is just going to be, you know, one dollar, no, no strings attached. I can't agree with that because I don't think that's fair to our school district or our students. I don't want them to steal our lunch money. I think we need, I think we need to realize our profits. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, I saw, saw that come through and was watching the meeting. The, the one dollar, no conditions, absolutely not. On the no conditions, I think as part of the conditions, you know, it's not just money going back into our, our fund, but I think there should be something, if, if, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Johnson, as far as what that could be either sold to or become. I know there's properties all over the county that has deed restrictions. I'm assuming you could do the same with this just to protect that community. I do know that they, sounds like they, watching the last meeting, reached out to some folks in the Pine Hall community. And, you know, I don't want to do anything from either board that would harm that community in a negative way. And so I think we've got to be careful. If we're giving it, or I'm not, not giving it away, let me say that upfront, what we negotiate, I don't want it to where it's just, you know, it's an eyesore for that community. And I'm sure we, could we do something in our conditions of, of restrictions on that? Is that, is that possible?
Certainly. We've got the point of the statute where it talks about negotiating between the boards. I think it's the point of actually negotiating those terms.
Yeah.
As well as the dollar amount. And if there cannot be a negotiation, if that does not result in an agreement between the two boards, then we look at the other avenues that we have for disposition of the property. Which has to be some type of public sale. But we could put our own conditions on it. Then it had to be for some type of public use or public purpose.
Right.
Such as a community center or some other public facility. We'll put restrictions on what can go there.
I know in listening to the, the meeting, I think that was a big piece and a big push was to, to be used in, in some type of community center or almost like a Y. The issue I think from a bigger perspective is, you know, I don't see the county maintaining that, being able to financially. I mean, we've got buildings throughout the county that we can't maintain currently. So I don't think adding another one to that list would be, I think private would, I mean, private investor would certainly be a better option. So I'm, I'm not in favor of, if this is their offer, that I, as a board member, would decline that, one dollar and no conditions. And I also want to make something clear that was mentioned in the commissioners' meeting. I got confirmation from our maintenance director. And I believe in going to the source instead of just hearsay or chatter, but the air conditionings that was mentioned in the board meeting for the commissioners, you know, that they had been removed, that is not the case. They had removed some, I think moved a couple into the county and, and so, but, but the building is still being conditioned. So I, I just want to make sure that's clear and, and on record that, that was, is not accurate. And I think that's an important thing is that, you know, that's, if it's up to, I hate to just, we're not giving it away and just saying, here you go. And I think that we, we have a, as a school district, still have a vested interest in that community that I, I want to do right by them. And, and, and being involved in that, I think is, is key. So if this is their offer, then, you know, they, they, I'm sure just like they think, well, thus we need to go back to the drawing board. Well, I think they as well. That's, that's all I've got right now.
Ms. Bennett, back to you.
Summarized everything that I was kind of thinking of.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have another follow-up question from Mr. Johnson. Uh, Mr. Johnson, would it be possible that, that we could maintain ownership, if you will, or control of the school and, and let the commissioners know if they wanted to come with, to us with a proposal on what they have worked out and what they might would want to do with the school, and get our approval on it before it went forward? Would that be a possibility?
Certainly, certainly.
So, so they could, you know, that kind of gives them a leeway if they want to try to work out a, a scenario with, with a private investor or whatever, then they could come back to us and get approval on that. And at that point, if we were in favor of that transaction, we could approve it.
Certainly. I think that's exactly where we are, you know, a, a, a matter of negotiating between the two boards.
Instead of just, instead of just transferring it over, it, I mean, just, instead of just transferring it over, not knowing anything that may happen.
Right.
Because there may be a, there may be a, a scenario that they would be in favor of, but we would not.
Right. Because that's part of the consideration coming to this board is that we have input into what happens.
And I think what they're asking us to do is just to, to, just to turn it over to a, for a dollar without any, really any input from this board. And I think that's what maybe this board is having issues with at this point is I think we would like to have some input into it. I think both boards want to see the best, the highest and best use for the property. And just like Mr. Duncan said, we want to see the community happy with what's going on with that property. We don't want to see, we don't want to see anything bad happen there. We want it to be an asset to the community. I think we all feel strongly about that. I'm sure they do, and I think the community does. It's just a matter of how, how we can best arrive at that, at that point. Thank you.
May I?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I would just say that I don't know that I fully agree, you know, that either one board's going to manage, you know, the public interaction or the other. I think it would get a little bit complicated, you know, if both boards are trying to fulfill the needs of the public and the public meetings are being held with the commission board, because again, it was previously stated that we have no authority to interact with the public and make, you know, those type of provisions on what happens, if I'm understanding correctly, Mr. Johnson. You know, we spoke on that right at the beginning of this conversation. It would be, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's basically like saying, here, go do the, the tough stuff and listen to the community, but then we want to ultimately say yes or no. I thought that once, you, you know, once we sign it over, it's kind of in their hands. And the only negotiating piece at this point, sounds like would be the dollar, yes or no? And, you know, does the money come back into our capital fund, yes or no? But to say that we also want to, I mean, I don't know if that's appropriate at this time.
I think at this point, we're saying no to that offer. Here's our offer. And we can make that offer whatever we want.
Sure.
Because I can assure you, I'm saying no to that offer. Now I can see disposing of it for a dollar with the condition that any sale, any profits obtained from the sale of that property doesn't just go to the four cent fund, goes to the two and three-quarter percent of the four cent fund that goes to Stokes County schools. Because of that four percent, one and a quarter, am I not right, Ms. Moore? Goes towards Forsyth Tech. Forsyth Tech doesn't have any skin in the game for Pine Hall, so they shouldn't have any profits in there. The la, the board that disposed of the Francisco property, and I wasn't part of it, I was after and before me, saw zero in Stokes County schools from the disposition of that property. I think this board is in its best interest to ensure that some of those educational assets are re-obtained as educational assets and not as a good faith to a private citizen that five years later, Stokes County schools was out. Let's don't kid ourselves. So with that being said, I'm going to suggest that we go back to them with the offer. We'll sell it to you for a dollar, but we have final, say veto approval on how it's sold and all of the profits from the sale, after expenses, all of the net profits has to go to the two and three-quarter percent portion of the, of the four cent fund. That way, we still maintain veto approval. We, they have property. And we're not going to be crazy about how the, it's spent because we're all stewards of the people. And we're all going to try to do what's right for Pine Hall. But this way, we're not saying, you don't have five board members on one side, five board members on another saying, well, we've got to have ten people come along and say, well, this is what's in the best interest of everybody. That property will be here long after we are all in another place before we ever agree with that. And you could have an election that would change all of that. I'm just saying, let them dispose of it because they have more venues, but just give us the final right of refusal for the sale. Is that stretching it too far, Mr. Johnson?
No, I don't think it's stretching it too far at all.
I'm trying to de-complicate a very complicated situation. And my only goal is what's best for the county and the people of Pine Hall, because they're the people without a school and a, and a focal point of their community. So with that, we'll go around again. Ms. Bennett, what say ye?
As far as, to sell for a dollar with, with certain conditions, I guess.
With those conditions? Or do you have some more that you want to bring up?
No, no, no.
Because we can negotiate here. We, we're all negotiating. Okay. So your final that?
I'm still with my original comment. Not, I would say, I'm not including the last piece of veto power because again, we're not going through the meetings, we're not putting the time and effort into talking with the community and all that, and then just to get to say yes or no. I mean, you know, it would require a lot more homework.
I'm just saying, we could still do that?
Out of this board.
We could still do that and then veto based on what we hear, because we may hear the community say something in a meeting. They don't, but that's fine. You're entirely, so you're fine with just giving them the, the property for a dollar and?
But the sale, granted that they do a good job by the community first and that there's an agreeance on a committee there in that community so that their needs are being met, and then that the funds potentially come back to the capital fund for the school system. That's it. No veto power, no whatever, you know. I feel like if they're going to do the difficult, you know, and tedious task, you know, then that's.
Okay.
Good.
Mr. Robertson?
Um, I think, I think we should have some say. I don't, I don't approve of just giving it to them with, with no strings attached. I don't think that's, I don't think that's in our best interest or the school's best interest. I'm okay with giving them the leeway to come up with a, come up with an offer, something different than one dollar and just no strings attached. That doesn't seem to cut it for me. Like I said, I, you know, we're here to advocate for our schools and our students. And I think that's what we have to do. So however you want to word that, whether it's a veto power or, you know, whatever, I just think that we have to have some input into how the property will be disposed of. I think that's only, I think that's only right. If they don't want to handle it and we want to handle it, then that would be, you know, that would be, that's their choice. But, and the fact that it, and any proceeds, realized proceeds goes into the, the Stokes County part of the four cent fund. I, I agree with that.
Okay. Mr. Duncan?
I'm good with the, the transfer as long as upon, to your point, upon selling it, we get the, the proceeds. And I didn't realize the, the split or I forgot about that. So I agree that, you know, it should stay in the Stokes County piece. But is there a way that you could work? And I don't know, just hear me out, Mr. Johnson, see if this is, does it make sense to where, I think to kind of follow up on what you were saying, Mike, but upon the, a community, so that's the thing is that, how do you want to word that? That the group, I think the Pine Hall community, I don't know how you get, get that. Because my understanding, when Francisco was, was disposed of, there was a 501(c)(3) that was kind of started in that community. And it sounds like that may be the same case in Pine Hall and that, you know, would they be that, that body that helps approve that? Does that make sense? I don't know if it does or not, but I don't think that we just say, here, here you go. But I don't know how, how you word that. I mean, the veto power.
Basically, it's a right of final approval prior to sale.
Yeah.
Sounds better than veto.
So, but in that situation, we wouldn't really transfer it over to them. We would just give them permission to negotiate a sale of the property or a use of the property and then come back to us with what you've come up with and give us, give us a right to either approve it or not approve it.
I think in that case.
Once we, once we transfer it over to them, just like there again, if you're buying a house, you sell me, if you sell me your house and I don't, you know, keep a grass cut, that's not, you can't say too much to me about it because at that point, I'm, it's mine and not yours. So I think that would be, that would be, you know, once we transfer that over, it's theirs to do as they wish. So.
And I don't think they'll approve, you know, basically y'all do the work and, and we'll get the blessing. I don't, I don't see that.
Well, Fred, I mean, can we transfer it and still have that control, as I mentioned, right of final?
Not unless we put something like that in the instrument of transfer. I mean.
That's what I'm saying. If we put it in the instrument of transfer and they are fine with us just, you know, you can sell it based on these conditions if you have our blessing, just a yea or a nay.
And we would have, if you did say it that way, or if that's the intent, then we'd have to have in the conveyance itself that we have the final authority to approve the usage of that property. And then you're going to put that provision on there that if the county sells it rather than develop it itself and use it for, as a county-owned facility. If the county were to sell it, then you get that, the net. If the county were to sell it, then you get that, the net profit goes to the...
Four cents.
The fund that you're, the two, the two and three-fourth percent of four percent, as you said. I guess the key to this from my standpoint is, well, what does the community want this facility to be?
Mm-hmm.
And how are the commissioners gonna determine what the community, are they, what kind of input are they getting from the community? Are they holding a public hearing out there to say, what do you want?
Needs to be the case.
Now, what does the community want us to do with this building? I don't know. And I think what you're saying is we want to make sure commissioners that you're doing what the community of Pine Hall wants.
Mm-hmm.
And if you can assure us that, then we're okay with it. Provided if it's a sale, then we get this percentage or this amount of any net profit.
You said that so much better than I just tried to.
Yes.
And I, and I will add too, I think we may be trying to overcomplicate it in a way. So if we break it back down to the basics, if we do transfer it over to them for a dollar, okay? We transfer it to them for a dollar with a stipulation that any proceeds goes into the Stokes County side of the four cent fund. And that's it. No first right of refusal, no, uh, approval, no whatever. At that point, when we transfer that property over, they are the ones now responsible for it. It no longer costs us money, right? It doesn't cost us thousands of dollars a month to maintain it, to heat it, to cool it, to mow the grass, that's all. That's the county's responsibility, right? The only thing we're gonna do is sit back and wait and see if they can sell it and make any kind of profit on it. And if they do, then we get the profit. We'll let them do the work. We'll let them take the heat or, or applause or whatever it might be from the community, but they would be responsible for it. If the, if the general public don't like what the deal that they strike with it, I think, um, I think the public perception on the deal that Francisco is still up for debate. You know, does, did the public really like the deal that they struck with that, you know? Uh, the, the, that property transferred ownerships. And I think the, uh, the party that owns it now, uh, you know, eventually got it without, and really the county didn't, uh, receive any money back for it. Now, the gentleman, I think, that bought it did invest a lot of money. He got it, you know, uh, he, he renovated it. There are businesses in it, so do they, does the county receive, uh, sales tax or other benefits from having those people there now? Yeah, probably. I mean, there's a good argument for that too. But the public perception is, is they gave the school away. So if we transfer it over for a dollar, uh, with the stipulation that we receive any, any realized profits from that building, then the rest of it is on the county. Then it's up to them to strike a good deal or not strike a good deal. And whatever the public, however, how the public perceives that is gonna be on them and not us. Now, we're still gonna receive profits, uh, if they can't find an, an initial investor to go in. And, you know, we already know the school has, needs a roof, right? It's got, it's got water, I think sewer issues. Um, so there, whoever, uh, whoever decides to take that project on is gonna have quite a bit of money to put into it in order to get it to be a functioning school. But at the same time, as we transfer that over, uh, we are no longer writing the checks. Ms. Moore doesn't have to pay any more money out and it does cost us thousands of dollars a month.
Richie doesn't have to fix anything.
Richie don't have to go back by there and, uh, they can do, uh, they can do whatever they, you know, whatever they like. And I, and I, and a, and one other just quick point is I did hear some of the comments from their meeting. Uh, people were talking about the playground equipment. And, and, uh, Mr. Roberts, uh, came into our meeting one time with pictures and showing that the playground equipment was basically rusted in two. Is that correct? And, and it was, and we had plans on, uh, uh, sending that out to other schools that needed some playground equipment for their students to use and children to keep, keep playing on it. But we de- we determined that the, the playground equipment is so unsafe that we couldn't do anything with it. And, uh, I think that point was missed a little bit in their meeting and by the, by the community. We didn't just go and destroy the playground just for the fun of it. Uh, we were, we were trying to use that playground equipment for other, for other kids. And, uh, the playground equipment, as we got it out of the ground, it just rusted in two and it was not safe to play on anymore. So, but that's, I think that would be my thoughts on... And I would almost suggest that, um, if we can kind of somewhat come to a consensus, let Mr. Johnson draft us a po- or draft us a proposal and bring it back to the next meeting. And then we can read through it again and vote yea or nay.
Do they need to see something pretty quick?
There's not a deadline on this. I'm sure they would rather know sooner than later, but I don't think two weeks is unreasonable.
They even, and they even said in their meeting that, uh, that they would not be in a big hurry to dispose of it. It could take, I think, one of them even mentioned it might take a year to come up with a plan. Is that right, Mr. Duncan?
Yeah.
I think you watched the meeting.
Yep.
So I don't, I don't think that they're, you know, they're, I don't think they have somebody standing there waiting to write a check. Uh, and I would rather for us to have a good, uh, proposal in hand and written out that we might could look at and read. And then if we need to make, maybe if we can get that in the next week or so, we might can make some changes to it before we come back at our next meeting and be able to vote on it and, and off we go.
Okay.
I'll just say that, um, you know, speaking of things that go on in communities and outside of our scope or participation is not, you know, altogether maybe the right thing to do. So, uh, you know, I'm not gonna judge, uh, the situation with Francisco and all that. I mean, from what I gather, they have a successful community group and it's growing and it's thriving. And like, like everyone has stated here, um, lots of money gets spent on these older facilities to make something out of them. Um, so I don't, you know, personally want to get into the, um, speculation game of who's happy with what. But, um, hopefully, you know, our county commissioners will try to be diligent of, uh, involving the community, so I'll agree.
Okay, with that being said, then, we, we'll just cut to the chase. Are you good with, and I'm not trying to go to, I'm just trying to get a consensus of the board so Fred has a direction to go and his wording. You good with selling it for a dollar with all proceeds coming back to Stokes County Schools, portion of the four cent fund?
Yes.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, just the two items, not the third veto stuff.
Just the two. And the veto was just to keep everybody else happy. I could, you know, as long as Pine Hall's happy, I'm happy.
As long as it doesn't involve a veto, I'm okay.
Yeah. Mr. Robertson, it was your idea. I'm assuming you're still good with your own idea. Okay.
And again, I mentioned it first and everybody just kind of rolled off of that. But again, I feel like it was stating the obvious.
Ms. Knight, I, I, you know, I appreciate that thought, but I was not clear on what you were trying to say.
Okay.
And that maybe is my shortcoming, but it, I won't go there. Mr. Duncan?
I'm good with that and I'm also good with him writing up the...
Yeah, I'm just saying, give Fred a, yeah. You've got a definitive definition of what you need to work around, possibly. Okay, moving on to, we'll table that one, put it back on action for the work session. Policy forty-four hundred adoption immediately pursuant to state law. Looking for a motion to approve.
I make a motion at approval of updates to policy four hundred, uh, forty-four hundred dash AP to reflect updated state board policy.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Information and announcements. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Very briefly, our next meeting will be on the sixth of October. It's a work session here in the administrative office. And, uh, you have fundraising and calendars in your packet. And then the only other thing I'll mention is we're creeping up on the end of the first nine weeks. And so I appreciate the work's been done in our school so far and, uh, look forward to that continuing. So that's all I have.
Good. The only thing I'll add is you, the work session starts at six, but board, do we need to publish that?
Workshop, we will. That's at three, right?
Board workshop starts at three for us and Dr. Rice and Dr. Jones, willing to participate. Uh, we need to send out a notice in cohe- uh, conjunction with that, Pam, if you don't mind.
That is the October sixth meeting?
October sixth meeting at three o'clock here in the work, here in this fine establishment. And hopefully it'll be cooled off by then. Five thirty closed session, still the plan? Yeah, well, we're gonna start here at three and we'll get to it, you know, five thirty, publish at four. Okay? All right, with all that said, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
No, he beat you.
Second.
He got a second. She beat you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming out. Drive carefully going home. We didn't beat daylight, though.